Pope, the Ozark Empire Fair, St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton, Marshfield Community Theater, and several other organizations in the Ozarks. Annie has two great passions, art and serving her peers. For her Leadership School project, Annie created an extensive anti-bullying campaign, complete with a website, documentary, presentations to underclassmen, and a beautiful mural at Parkview High School proclaiming, "Don't be a bully, be a Viking hero." Annie is also a very talented artist and is known to many at Parkview as the student always carrying around giant art pieces. She's created an extensive portfolio of amazing work and has received over $100,000 in scholarship offers from different art schools across the nation.
Can you say that part again, please?
Yes. She has received more than $100,000 in scholarship offers.
Girl, oh, me, come on. That's impressive.
Alana, who is called Lonnie by her friends, has committed hundreds of hours of service to Abu Ben Adam Shrine, the Price Cutter Charity Championship, the Community Blood Center of the Ozarks, and her church, where she began volunteering at age 10. During her freshman year at Parkview, her father died after battling cancer. Lonnie struggled with grief for a long time, regularly attending groups at Lost and Found Grief Center. During her senior year, Lonnie put her leadership skills to work in numerous ways. Lonnie is involved in many organizations at Parkview High School in addition to holding a part-time job and maintaining excellent grades. Through the Parkview High School Leadership School, she's implemented an impressive capstone project where she raised more than $2,000 for Lost and Found and supported many other Parkview High School families.
We're going to clap for that.
Great organization.
She has also served as this student body president and served as an A-plus tutor for more than 100 hours. So what an inspiration it is for us to meet these outstanding young ladies and know that they are going out into the world to continue making it a better place. And at this time, we ask their family members and their principal, Dr. Ramsey, to please stand so that we may acknowledge their support of Annie and Alana. So now we ask everyone to please rise if you are able as Annie and Alana lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies.
So we will now move forward with our honoring excellence, and we'll begin with exciting news on ACT scores. We have two more outstanding students to recognize. Dylan Fowler and Malia Morgan are Central High School students who scored the highest possible ACT composite score this year. Dylan, who is a sophomore.
Say that again.
Dylan is a sophomore, and Malia, who is a junior, both earned a perfect score of 36. So we get to brag on Dylan a little bit. Malia is unable to be with us tonight, but to put that in perspective, on average, only 1/10th of 1% of students who take the ACT earn a top score. So in the United States, high school graduating class of 2017, only 2,760 out of more than 2 million graduates who took the ACT earned a composite score of 36. So Dylan, we want to invite your family to stand so that we may acknowledge all of their support as well. So thank you so much for being with us.
And for making us feel profoundly inadequate.
Congratulations.
We also have a School Nurse of the Year among us. So if you would mind to come forward, Rhonda, I'm going to brag a little bit about you. To the 300 students at Truman Elementary School, she is known as Nurse Rhonda. Now Rhonda Craven is also known as the 2018 School Nurse of the Year. She was honored with this distinction on April 25th by the News Leader during its Salute to Nurses event. Her compassionate care of students and staff and her focus on building strong personal relationships with everyone in the school community are among the qualities that distinguished her for this honor. We have a video that tells more of her story and why her colleagues think she is so deserving of this award.
I'll cry because I always cry.
Oh, well, wait a minute. We need a tissue for her before any cries.
Okay. I might send a tissue.
My favorite part of my work is the kids. I mean, I love them. You know, they come in for different reasons, and I find out about their lives, and we laugh, and they make me happy, and they're always exuberant. And so, yeah, my favorite part is the kids.
She has such compassion and empathy, and she goes beyond the job. It's a life's mission for her. It's a passion for her, and she cares so deeply that especially like for those parents who have kids who have chronic health conditions.
I think I've always just wanted to help people, and nursing was a good opportunity for that.
When students walk in with their little nurse slip, the first thing she does, if we're standing in the office talking, she'll touch them on the shoulder and say, "What's wrong? How can I help you?" Those are great qualities that I look for in a nurse.
I think what inspires me in my job is seeing kids be successful every day, whether they have health concerns, whether they have emotional concerns, whether they have family concerns. They come to school, they work hard, and hopefully they're successful.
She has such a passion and a mission to care for others, more so than just, oh, it's a nine-to-five job. It's her life's mission to care for them and to provide the resources that students need so that they have an opportunity to be successful in life.
I am truly honored about being nominated for this award, truly, truly honored. But I never do my job for recognition. I try to come in and do my job and make a difference.
Rhonda is deserving of this award because of the compassion that she shows others, because of her professionalism.
Well, first of all, whoever nominated me, thank you very much. I would also like to thank my boss, Jane Grayville. I mean, she's been amazing to me over the years. And my family, of course, for always supporting me. But truly, my colleagues here at Truman Elementary, they're... We have a very, very close group here in this office, and we could not get through day-to-day without each other, and I love them.
Awesome. Congratulations. We want to celebrate one of our employees as part of our Power of One SPS initiative, which allows us to spotlight those who go above and beyond to make an impact on the lives of children. This is our May Power of One story, Heather Woodburn.
My favorite part is being out here with the students, so in case there is a need, I can step in and help. I truly love feeding kids. Hi, I'm Heather Woodburn. I'm the Cafeteria Manager for Glendale High School. I like to spend time with my family. I have two grown children and two that are still in school. I've been at Glendale seven years, going on eight. I enjoy Glendale because it's a great group of students and the support staff here, they go above and beyond. There was a student when I was very young to the district that got kicked out of his house, was very hungry, was pretty much just living on the streets. He was trying to graduate, and myself and some other ladies who worked in the kitchen, we took it upon ourselves to help him graduate by buying, you know, whatever he needed for graduation, new clothes, helped him with food for the evenings. Later on, I seen him as an adult, and he was doing very well, had a nice job, had a nice family. I feel like I should help kids that need it because I was one of those students that needed the extra help. Feeding the kids good nutritious food, making them healthy and happy, that goes from these students here to students at Hillcrest, to students at Kickapoo, wherever I'm at, that's what I want to do.
So it is our pleasure to introduce you to Heather Woodburn, Nutrition Services Manager at Glendale High School. And at this time, we would like to welcome Mrs. Marty Moore to the podium for our Community Partner Recognition.
Our Springfield Public Schools partners have the opportunity to support students and teachers in three ways. They can provide resource support, community engagement, or enrich learning experiences. Many of our partners choose all three, and that is true of tonight's honoree, the Springfield Green County Library. Robust programming supports reading for pleasure, opening up worlds beyond Springfield, and helping students and their families connect to people, places, and experiences that might otherwise be unavailable. The library partners with Springfield Public Schools to bring once-in-a-lifetime exhibits to town, explore space in partnership with the National Science Foundation, exploring human origins, what does it mean to be human, NASA at my library, and numerous author talks, including this summer's focus with Bobby Northfold. Additionally, they're longstanding sponsors of the African-American Read-In. They are also co- recipients of the DARF Family Grant, supporting our Wonder Years classrooms this year and for the next four years. Nancy Domstinson assists us in curating and purchasing books at a discount. And in addition to all of these features, for the past two years, the Midtown Branch has supported Ujima family literacy, generating an explosion of toddlers in the program. Stephanie Smallwood, their early literacy specialist, in collaboration with our parents' teachers, Leslie Berry, supports parent and child growth in literacy. Allison Eckert and Deborah Russo serve where needed, and we're always grateful for the fines that they have forgiven for those families, allowing them to reengage with library services. We appreciate their assistance in expanding our reach and providing additional layers of supports for our families. I think over time, you've seen some of the work that they do, specifically at Ujima, and instead of honoring them with their presence here at the boardroom tonight, tomorrow, we'll be expressing our appreciation to them at the Midtown Branch because we do not know what we do without their help. So we'll be taking them donuts and coffee and delivering that to their staff at the Midtown Library tomorrow. We appreciate the work, so a round of applause for all of them.
That's very nice. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, now, I'd like to alert those of you who came just to celebrate the wonderful people that we just celebrated. You should feel free to hit the road, Dylan. Dylan did not want all this attention tonight, but he's pretty amazing. Thank you all for being here.
Yes, thank you.
And now, we're going to move on to 1.04, which is the approval of the agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the Tuesday, May 15th, 2018 Board of Education Regular Meeting Agenda?
Seven.
We have Alina with a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Charles, and now, please vote. Do we have the votes in?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So we will proceed, and the first item is Item 2.01, which is Public Comments to Address Agenda Items. And I do believe that we do have public comments tonight. And that will involve a request that they wish to come up together. So I've said that'll be fine. We'll just bend the rule a little there. Margaret Watson, Dr. Norman Eli, and Diane Eli?
Margaret.
Okay, I'm sorry. So Margaret was on top. Should we do that one first?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Of course, I can't see past this... Sorry, Margaret, I got confused.
That's okay. That's okay. We wanted, I wanted to take this opportunity to...
Just one minute. Missy, Missy, come back here so you can get a good...
Oh, you guys, since they're being shy. Our Missouri State Teachers Association has broken up into regions, and we are part of the Southwest Region Teachers Association. And in April, we were happy that we had some winners of a region award. Kristy Davis, who's also my supervisor, is enrolling classes at MSU and SBU, completed her spring semester, 14 hours, taking nine hours this summer. I don't know how she does that and works full-time, but she does. And she will have her Special Ed Director certificate at the end of August, and then we'll have her doctorate completed at SBU in 2020. So great announcement that she was the winner of the scholarship award that the region gave out. So we are very excited for her to fill out those forms for me.
Nice work, Kristy.
And then Donna Ramsey is a special friend of mine, and she was the recipient of the Region's Associate Member of the Year Award. And Donna is our Early Childhood Special Ed Program Secretary. And I can't say it any better than Jennifer Cantrell already said it, so I'm kind of, I'm going to quote something she said. She said, "Her title, a program secretary, doesn't describe her countless contributions to our program. The transportation coordinator for all early childhood special ed students at six different locations across the school district. She works collaboratively with the Transportation Department staff to ensure we transport our district's youngest learners in a safe and efficient manner." Another role Donna fills is a receptionist for Shining Stars Building, so she's the first person to greet our students and families as they enter our center. Donna is able to multitask all of her numerous receptionist duties, and she still takes the time to stop and greet students by name. They all love Ms. Donna. We all love Ms. Donna. And so we just wanted to let you know what wonderful staff we have here and that our region has recognized that. We wanted to recognize that for you.
Excellent. Thank you for doing that. Okay, now, I'm not combining anyone else except for on purpose. I think Dr. Eli and Diane Eli can come up. I've invited them to come together. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dr. Norman Eli. I'm a physician here in town. We are residents of the R-12 School District. This is my wife, Diane Eli, and tonight, we're here to speak about what we perceive as some significant cybersecurity issues within the Springfield Public School system. So esteemed members of the Board of Springfield R-12 School and Springfield Public School staff, thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'd like to give a little background information first that I think is very important to what I'll be saying on later on in this presentation. So moving on to some background information. In December of last year, our daughter, who is an administrator at Springfield Public Schools, raised concerns about possible wrongdoings within the district. Since then, she has consistently been under significant attack. Beginning on December 3rd, 2017, our daughter's cellphone and computers were hacked allegedly from someone within the district. And police reports, which I believe you'll have a copy, confirmed that this did indeed originate from within the school system. At least one or on one or more occasions, the hacking was traced to the Bentley Building. The cellphone was her personal cellphone, the computers were her district iPad, her district teacher device, and her district laptop. This hacking has now impacted three of her personal cellphones, all of her social media accounts, her personal email, her personal Google drives, her work email, and work Google drives. Her personal bank account and credit cards were also hacked. She had to set up new bank accounts and passwords multiple times. As of May 7th, 2018, she is still being hacked. The first point of access to her information was identified by JAG Investigations out of Arizona, who is a company who is contracted with Homeland Security to speak and teach in cybersecurity, and they determined that it was through the Microsoft Network Exchange. After purchasing a new phone and starting from scratch, it was quickly discovered through a Springfield Police Investigation, as well as diligent and thorough assistance of the NEA and the Springfield Public Schools HR Director, that a second point of access to her accounts was via the Springfield Public School's system Google Drive. Upon further investigation and research, it was discovered that when an employee or student logs onto their Google Drive, either from their school device, personal cellphone, home computer, home iPad, et cetera, that even when logged out, the Google Drive continues running in the background, collecting personal data of any person that uses that device. Any devices that are used to log into the Springfield Public School system Google Drive can be automatically synced to the Springfield Public School Google Drive, providing the district with all identifying information of that device, including IP addresses, serial numbers, and other information, which is collectively known as IMEI, which is the computer equivalent of the person's social security number, which then allows a hacker to bypass any passwords and have complete control of that device. This is how it is suspected that our daughter's devices continue to be hacked and remotely controlled. This was suggested by the Springfield Police Department and confirmed to be 100% probable by individuals at Best Buy, Verizon, and JAG Investigations. Initially, the Springfield Public Schools IT person said that this could not happen due to their security. However, the police report and evidence supported the allegation. SPS has now confirmed that this was possible, and the district was aware of passwords being stored, and they even stated, and I quote, "That they need to do a better job of communicating this to parents next year," end quote. During this process, our daughter used my personal computer and my wife's personal computer to log into her public school Google Drive while trying to protect herself from the continuous hacking, and unknowingly synced both of our computers to the SPS Google Drive. After consulting with several experts in the field, including JAG Investigations, it was determined that SPS probably holds all of our personal data contained in our personal computers and linked devices. All consulted experts agreed that to ensure that no potential cyber threat continues, the only resolution is to replace all of our personal computers, phones, iPads, and even Apple Watches. Because of the way data is stored in the form of metadata and in the cloud, it is not even possible to backup our information to the cloud and simply restore it to a new computer. It all has to be manually transferred unless it is a photo or video that can simply be copied without the data to USB device. And again, if you use your home computer or other devices, a family member's computer you log into, the drive and log out, your personal information is still being stored to the SPS Google Drive and their educational Google Vault. On February 25th, 2018, our personal credit card, although it had our daughter's name on it, was fraudently used to subscribe to a company called TruthFinder.com, a company that does background checks. Two background checks were run that day, one on our son-in-law and one on our son-in-law's former fiance from more than 20 years ago, because they had purchased a house together, and her name was listed as someone associated with him. We can 100% attest to the fact that none of our family members did this, as our daughter was extremely ill and in the hospital that day, and would not be running background checks to anyone, even if she weren't in the hospital. Both TruthFinder and our credit card company determined this subscription to be fraudulent. The information used to set up this account was information of which only someone in the district would have knowledge and access to. A police report was submitted, and SPS was notified. This incident is still open and under investigation with the Springfield Police Department. I also have some specific examples of what type of information is being stored without the community's knowledge, and these come practically from within our family. We have another daughter that teaches in the R-12 District. When she logged onto her Google Drive account from her home computer to finish up some lesson plans and logged out, she checked on finding a hotel for an upcoming trip. She logged into our personal time share account from her home computer, and even though she signed out of her Google Drive, it stored all of our time share information to the Google Drive, including the web address, login, username, and password. It also has a smart link, so you can just click the link, and it will automatically sign you into that site. When looking more closely, our daughter had 139 sites, logins, and passwords stored, including her bank account, her iCloud, her personal email, her Amazon account, and others. Our son-in-law works for Stryker, a national medical device and equipment manufacturing company. Our daughter does not have her husband's Stryker account information and has never logged into this account, but she did use their home computer to access her Google Drive, and because SPS's Google Drive stored every bit of account information from any accounts logged in after that point, her husband's Stryker website, username, and password were stored to her SPS Google Drive. At glance, the password looks encrypted, but you just have to click on the eye to see it. Our son-in-law was obligated to notify his supervisors of this security breach. Cox Health was also notified. In addition, because my personal home computer was unknowingly synced to the SPS Google Drive and server, we've been told by cybersecurity experts that most likely means that they have all of my computer information. This could allow someone to bypass all security passwords and remote and give them access to everything I do, including accessing medical reports. If someone from the district were to hack my computer in the same manner in which they hacked our daughter's, patient's confidential information could be at risk. This is a risk that is unacceptable and must be immediately remedied. This could also put the district at risk for violating HIPAA laws. Not knowing how long my computer has been synced makes removing data difficult because the district is constantly running up backup servers, again, assisting the need for completely new and secure computers. I have notified Cox Health Legal and IT Departments of this security breach. But this also means that every employee at Cox Health, as well as many large institutions throughout the district with a student, a spouse, or relative at SPS, has the potential of having confidential information on the Springfield Public School Google Drive and server, because you don't have to use a district-issued device. You simply have to have someone in your family log into the SPS Google Drive, and everything after that is captured. This problem is district-wide and leaves kids, teachers, employees, and even individuals unassociated with SPS such as ourselves vulnerable to cyber attacks and confidential information being released. SPS has a one-to-one technology initiative which provides, this is moving on to a little bit different, but it's still the same issue, but SPS has a one-to-one technology initiative which provides every student in grade 3 through 12 a Chromebook that allows them to access curriculum, work on projects, and presentations, and have access to a computer and internet at home. Kids' grade K through 2 are given a device, but those remaining in the classroom are not sent home with the exception of the schools. All devices and school education platforms run off Google Chrome, a platform that does not consistently ask permission to store their passwords, it just automatically does. To our knowledge, no information was sent home to parents discussing the potential for personal information being stored through the Springfield Schools' Google Drive and in their SPS Google Vault. In fact, teachers and employees were told that their devices could be treated as their own until the day they left the district. They were told that there was unlimited storage, all information is secure, and that you can save your documents, photos, books, movies, et cetera, as long as it met district appropriate guidelines. Also, all students' individual Chromebooks have the name, the school they attend, the year of graduation, student ID number, and their Google username on a label on the bottom of their Chromebook. This could give access to anyone who has that device in their possession or used by someone who records this information. This could give access to lunch accounts, student records, et cetera. This may also put the district at risk for violating both HIPAA and FERPA. A few other examples, our second grade grandson is not in the age group that issued a personal device to take home, but he does use the Google Drive at home to complete projects and homework. When his parents checked his SPS Google Drive account at our house to see what had been stored, every single YouTube video he had watched on his personal iPad at his own home and not during school time was stored to the SPS Google Drive. Although he watched what an eight-year-old boy watches, he was upset that someone outside of his family could see what he was doing on his own time. We did explain that his parents absolutely have the right to view what he is doing, but it's not the business of the school to track what kids are doing on their own personal, privately purchased device on their own personal time. Our fourth grade granddaughter downloaded a book, and our son-in-law's complete Amazon account was stored on her SPS Google Drive, although she had signed out of the Google Drive before purchasing the book. Our sixth grade granddaughter is very involved with Springfield Little Theater and does numerous acting jobs around the city, and will often keep her resume and video resume of roles on her personal email account. All of her personal emails and apps are stored in her SPS Google Drive, again, website, login, username, and password, when she had no idea if this was happening, was very concerned. We do have a list of remedies that we feel the Board should address. Number one, SPS must immediately remove all identifiable information from all student devices and have all students change passwords that only the student, the district school information officer, a school administrator, and a parent have access to. An independent firm must be hired to delete all personal data, personal information, and surfing data of all students and employees from its servers, including backup servers. You cannot simply restore the system to a previous date, because that does not guarantee that all personal information has been permanently deleted. A letter must be sent to every student's parent notifying them of what has happened and what steps SPS is taking to correct this situation. They must also be advised how to protect themselves from malicious use of this information. The same letter must also be sent to all SPS personnel. SPS must hire an independent firm to change the system whereby this information is not automatically stored in the SPS server. The district must hire an outside external The district must hire an outside expert in cybersecurity who will be available to anyone in the community who wants more information on how to protect themselves against these cyber threats.
Are you almost done, Dr. Eli? You're over time, so I just wondered if you were almost done?
Yes.
Thank you.
We also would request that the district consider reimbursing my wife and myself a replacement of our personal computers, phones, devices, and all expenses incurred, including time spent as a result of this extremely dangerous and egregious security breach and hacking. I'd like to conclude with, in 2016, a cybersecurity audit was completed by the Missouri State Auditor. In September 2017, the Missouri State Board Association sent recommendations on revising cybersecurity policies to districts. This was not on the Springfield School Board District's agenda for a first read until May 1st, 2018, as documented in School Board Minutes from May 1st, 2018, even though cyber attacks had been reported to leaders in the district by December 2017, and there was concern among numerous employees before that. It is completely inexcusable for the largest districts in the state of Missouri to take such great risks with the community members, employees, and most of all, the children for whom you are pledged to protect. I thank you for your time, and the SPS community looks forward to your prompt attention and resolution to this serious matter.
Thank you. I want to say that I neglected to read the information I should have at the beginning, but I just, so I just want to read part of it, just so you want, everyone understands why after that we're not responding, because we use this time to listen to the comments or concerns of the public, but we will not comment or respond at this time. But thank you for being here tonight to share.
Thank you for the opportunity. Really appreciate it.
All right. We will move to consent agenda now, which is 3.01, approval of the minutes. And consent agenda financial, 4.01, contracts, agreements, bids, and change orders, as well as 5.01, personnel elections, promotions, terminations, and employee compensation plan changes. So we will take up all three of those together. So do I have a motion that the board approve the consent agenda items 3.01, 4.01, and 5.01? Charles, and a second?
Second.
Bruce, thank you, and everyone, please vote. Oh, I accidentally hit the wrong thing, so I'm doing great. I abstained.
Wait, you take a stand.
I didn't say it's, yeah, right, like I would ever do that. All right, can you change my vote to yay? Thank you. All right, making all kinds of progress. All right, we're going to move on to the treasurer's report. I see somebody over there chomping at the bit, Ms. Embry.
It is very brief. You know very well that we are cruising toward the end of the fiscal year, and much work is going on in the finance department.
See, that's the difference between you and me. When you started that sentence, you said, "We are cruising along to the end of." I surely thought you meant the school year. Most of us in the room think like that.
That is true, too.
Sure, sure, the fiscal year.
But our, our school year ends beyond that date, and it's actually June 30. So a lot of work needs to take place between now and then. The treasurer's report for the month of May is very succinct and brief, and you will note that our budget amendment and transfer report is limited to a few transfers between funds. So both the revenue and the expenditure side in total are zero. Therefore, the fund balance continues to be very stable at 17.09% as an estimated fund balance for the end of this year. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, we posted the same documents that we post for you each month.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Embry? Okay, no questions. So do we have a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Denise, and a second?
Second.
I will accept Alina. You were a little slow on the draw. And now we will vote, and I will try to vote correctly. I think I got it right. Okay, and so that passes, and we're going to move on to 7.01, and our friends Jay Anderson and Shane Dublin are here to talk to us about a learner profile portfolio that I know a little bit about, because I presented with them at our conference room. But I was, I was really just carrying water. So here we go. The heavy lifters.
You were a large contribution.
Oh, yes.
Yes, we did present some semblance of this presentation in San Antonio to the National School Board Association, so we are excited to come and give an update this evening about learner portfolio. The artist formerly known as Profile of a Learner, you might recognize that. Profile of a Learner, we've kind of morphed the title, because there was some confusion between Portrait of a Graduate, also IB talks about a learner profile. So this is distinct and different. Learner Portfolio is our title. So it is a part of our strategic plan, Focus Area 1, Goal 2, so it's 1.2.9. And so Jay's going to step up here and do the first few slides, kind of give you the why and the how behind learner portfolio, then I'll kind of take us from where we're at and move into the future.
So mine will be, if you recall back to next year, there'll be some things that are similar, because we just want to draw back, it was a year ago, that we brought original to you, and some, give you a little history and where we're at, just to make sure that a more complete picture is before you. So that picture there on the screen, the one on the right specifically, as you see that resume in the trash, while resumes aren't completely, paper resumes aren't completely in the trash all the time these days, you see less of them, really, often, most of what we learn about events or people, we know, maybe comes online, and then we take the opportunity to print off the ones that we need and take a specific look at that, and as illustrated by the students there. So our guiding question in this work is, how are we helping students create opportunities for themselves to share their learning and passions both inside and outside of schools? It's, it's not healthy for us to think that we are the sole creators and supporters of all learning, and students have interests, and they have greater interest outside the school walls than they should, and we need to support that. And how do we capture that? How do we help them tell their story? And so it's, we want, we want to be a part of that, because we know that we're involved in student's achievement, and we are held responsible for that and accountable for that, all important work, but we also are about more than student achievement, and you'll see that word there quite a bit, "more." We're more than a test. We're more than a, teachers are more than a test, schools are more than a test, and that word "more" comes out quite a bit. As we've heard Dr. Jungman say, student achievement is important, it's critical, but it's not the only piece of the complete story of our students. So in our efforts to take this work forward, there's an important question there, where skills, qualities are most important for learners to possess. And I'm going to talk about this slide specifically, because this slide, that question was given to the NSBA, the conference that you just attended as board members, and Jill was with us, and that is the response from more than 50 board members from across the nation, is what they felt was important to that question. And we want to bring this up, because in our efforts to bring this work about, our efforts are not to replace reading, writing, or math skills, nor to displace science, social studies, mu, music, the humanities. Rather, it's to support the development of those skills and qualities of the, the soft skills, and use those subjects, use this as the methodology to share their content, to share their knowledge and understanding. And so we're pretty excited about these types of opportunities. There are some non-cognitive, soft skills qualities that we think our students should possess, besides having that academic knowledge. And we call that economic knowledge. What we are calling that in Springfield schools, at least around this work, is we want our students to be academically empowered. That's around student achievement and making sure that they know their core subjects and content. However, when they do that, it's how they do that. And we want them to show critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and creativity, the four Cs that we focused on last year at this time with you, and have those students develop. The how is the important part. How can you show those cognitive skills? How can you demonstrate them? You can do them through units of inquiry, in writing projects and volunteering. And when we look at ways to demonstrate student learning beyond the test, this is what our own staff members in Springfield Schools thought of ways that we can do that. So again, this is a representation of what our teachers and staff members think of how we do that. Beyond that, we need to start looking at, who is this for? Who is this learning for? Who is the student's audience? And so there are some things to be thinking about. Obviously, it's for themselves, for their own student growth and reflection, but it's for their parents. And what a great opportunity we have annual, if not more than one, for some kiddos, and opportunities to have student-parent teacher conferences. How can a, how can a kiddo show their learning? And should it just be one time a year? This is an opportunity to show more than that. How about influencers and law majors up there, but we're talking about society? How can we influence society as a whole? And then to their college, universities, and future employees? Because what the student is leaving is their digital footprint. That's their mark upon where they're going and what's important to them. Our endeavor in this work allows us to influence internet and electronics ability, responsibility, and contribution. Our students, like the rest of society, are leaving their legacy online. Whether we think it's appropriate or not is for us to help determine that and guide that. So we want to teach and support the right way to do this, so that they leave that right digital footprint. A few years ago, George Kearls came to Springfield, and he encouraged us to do a couple of things. He encouraged that these things should, all students should have these things before leaving high school. They should have a professional social network, they should have a digital portfolio, and the About Me page. And remember that powerful story that he shared about the Stanford student, or the student that wanted to go to Stanford and was rejected, and got that letter saying, "No, you're not welcome here." And she responded back to them, "Are you kidding me? Have you Googled me? Have you looked at who I am?" They found her About Me page, and they found, just like these girls that stood in front of you, how remarkable they were, and they said, "We were wrong. It's just not about your GPA. It's about your contribution. We want you to be a part of our program." This is the type of opportunities we're trying to create for our students here in Springfield Schools. So at this time, to share more of where we're gone and where we're going, I'll ask Shane to come back up here and continue the story.
When's my part? No, I'm just kidding. Totally kidding.
We have three slides for you. Just keep smiling, please. That's all you need to do. Yeah, so I want to, first of all, give us a little bit of a reminder, review of how this ties to our strategic plan, as I mentioned earlier, that it is part of Focus Area 1, which is process and learning support. So I'm not going to read all this to you, but the next slide kind of highlights the things that we wanted to share. So the goal in this focus area is for each student to have equitable access to engaging relevant personalized learning and show their personal growth. And to do that, the strategy would be to develop this learner portfolio. And then those last, that last purple highlight is the four Cs that we're working on. So this is directly from our strategic plan that was developed a number of years ago, and this is really the fleshing out of that, this Focus Area goal and strategy. So this is kind of the nitty-gritty of what is it, right? And you've kind of seen some of this before, but just hearken back to the days that we had our work on our fridge, or even our kids, well, my kids still have their work on my refrigerator. So we've kind of been jokingly calling this the Dig fridge, the Digital Fridge, that it's a way to showcase students' work online to a different audience, in a different way, and it doesn't have to be a piece of paper, right, or an artwork. It can actually be some sort of different evidence. The ironic thing is you can get a refrigerator now that can show this. There are ones that have screens, and so I'm not sure if that analogy works anymore. Anyways, you get the point. So I want to show a couple of examples. You, you guys will have access to the link, in fact, you may already, but there are six samples here. I'm just going to show a couple of them that are kind of highlight some of our students and their work. The two that I'm going to show you are in particularly, particularly neat, because they started last year. This first is a sixth grader that started as a fifth grader, and I'm going to show you the growth, and then the high schooler started in middle school, and now as a freshman has expanded her learner portfolio, and it's quite a couple of good evidence of that. So this first one is a young man who, again, is currently a sixth grader. And just a side note, we, we do have permission to show these publicly. I know some of you may be asking about that, but we got permission from the parents and the kids to show these at NSBA and in public. So this student is a fifth grader. If we click on his fifth grade subpage from last year, you notice it's not really robust. He has one thing under creativity, and so he is currently a sixth grader, and the contrast to now, he has put something under each of the four Cs. And again, just a reminder that this is student choice. Students get to choose which project they put under which C. There may be a time where the same project under collaboration, a student has the same project, or they might have used that project to put under creativity. So if it fits, and if they can rational, put the rational, rationalize that, it's, it's all up to them. So this student chose for creativity, a Turning Point essay that he wrote. And then for collaboration, looks like some sort of project that he did in the team. And then in communication, he wrote a fable, and so he shared a fable with us. So again, it's kind of neat to see that he has a pretty robust sixth grade page with all four Cs. So I'm going to click on a high school example, that this young lady is currently, and you might notice the front page there that she has, she has put where she went to elementary school, middle school, and now high school. And so she was a middler at middle, at Central, and now is currently a freshman. I actually believe this is one that came to the meeting.
Yes.
Pretty, pretty awesome student. She was neat. So her eighth grade page is not bad. She has one for each of the four Cs, so she actually had built it out pretty well. It's neat the collaboration she shares, a blog spot that she has created with a partner. So the connection, the collaboration is there. And then for communication, again, she had to, she chose art, which I think is kind of a neat example that some people may not think that that could represent, but she talks about it, was to communicate to an audience, demonstrating a certain thing. So she connected that to her communication.
And pink is not the typical background, so she also gussied it up.
Good point, and that's, yeah.
I know, I've looked at quite a few now.
So now I want to show you her ninth grade, which is very similar, but again, she has something for each of the four Cs, and is continuing this work in a pretty robust way this year. And again, we hope that she continues that through her 10th grade year. She has a couple websites here and kind of explains. I like on hers in particular how she gives that rationale as to why she put each piece here, and it's pretty, to the, to a newcomer to this that didn't know much about it might say, "Okay, why did they do that?"
Will you keep that right there for a second?
Yeah.
Let's look at those tabs. Are you taking questions?
Sure. Yeah, I can, I can share, yeah.
Okay. So I'm just looking at, so these were locked, I know you probably know that, that we couldn't look at those.
Yeah. I'm going to actually send them out later. I wonder if that, yeah.
Yeah, we were locked out of it. So this is the first time I'm able to see that, but, so I'm just looking at the tabs, so middle school, and she can demonstrate, so basically each year they have the ability to demonstrate that. It's not.
Yeah, and so the template, every student will have a template similar to this, unless they're not an IB, they obviously won't have the IB learner profile and actions, but every student will have an elementary one there. She started in middle school, so she doesn't. Elementary, middle, and high.
But every student can add different tabs based on whatever they're demonstrating learning in.
They could, they could customize that.
So, so she's got IB learner profile, but it could be any other leadership academy program.
Absolutely.
Whatever.
Yep.
Based on the different high schools or whatever.
Right, they'll start with a template, and then they can add tabs that they want to. The only really template would be these tabs and then the four Cs to start with.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if we were down the road, and we were talking about Profile of a Graduate, there could be a tab where they would demonstrate learning of that?
Sure, and I'll kind of talk about that in a minute, but yeah, absolutely. I'll kind of make that connection.
And then the student, okay, I'll keep listening. Go ahead.
Okay. So yeah, so again, and I'll, I'll send these to you guys, you can look at all six, and some pretty good examples for you. So right now, the current participation of who we have doing this is, in the elementary level, we have about 360-plus students involved, 17 teachers that we know of. Full grade level implementation, we have a second and third grade split class at Sherwood, a third grade at Roundtree, and a fifth grade at Westport that are full grade level. In the secondary, we have over 350 students and about 20 teachers that we know of. And then a full building implementation, our intermediate school, Wilson's Creek, both fifth and sixth grade, all kids, all teachers have just chosen to do it. And again, started out as invitational with blended learning mentors, and it really took off like wildfire, and we have that whole building doing a full building implementation. So that, that's current. So that, that's current. So here, Eileen, is kind of the connection to the portrait of a graduate that you alluded to. So, currently, so we've been working on this for about 18 months. I look at Jay, but I think that's about right. And the portrait of a graduate, they're currently collaborating with the opinion research specialists to identify those essential skills and attributes for graduating SPS students. And so those results will be shared in the fall with the communication plan. So how that connects to us is that once that's really fleshed out, and we as a district have finalized those skills and attributes, we see that those would be what students would then tag in their learner portfolio. So they may be the four Cs, and academically empowered, there may be some other skills that come up, but we would add them into the template and kids would then be able to tag those portrait of a graduate attributes.
Who's being surveyed by ORS to come up with this?
I don't know that I know that answer.
It's a broad range of stakeholders from across the community.
Okay. Yeah. And again, I think in the fall, that will be presented in the communication plan rollout after that. So here's kind of our current, our next steps, really. So this school year, we're going to continue to invite people to join the process. We do have, one, one kind of neat thing that started this year was certify SPS that I think you guys have heard about. One of the badges or the certification that teachers can get is the learner portfolio. And we have about 15 teachers that have, and that example, I won't take the time, but it's actually just a, another student learner portfolio that Mrs. Pope, who's a fifth grade teacher at Secriota, used to gain her badge, her certify SPS learner portfolio badge. So it's kind of a neat way for teachers to become experts and be then the experts in the building for learner portfolio. We also, starting this summer, are going to do, in our new hire onboarding, they will all be versed in learner portfolio. We see that at the, through Step Up and the Genesis Days, that new hires will learn how to do this. And someone was asking us, well, what does that training look like? Frankly, it's pretty quick. The, most of the bulk of that training are the, is the why and the how behind it. Why are we doing this? What is learner portfolio? The actual Google site setup, honestly, the kids will probably be teaching the teachers how to do that. It's so easy. I'd say, even I could do it. We could click and draw, drag evidence in there. So it's really more about training those new teachers, why are we doing this? What is a portfolio? Why would we want them to share their digital story with an audience and kind of giving them that background? And I'll share kind of how that looks, the next slide is a timeline. So here's kind of what we're thinking as far as a rollout timeline. And again, remembering that this is a part of our strategic plan, and the goal is to get it to scale in our district. So if you look at 2018, 19, that's this coming year, it continues to be a choice, continues to be invitational. However, in our freshman academies, which are at Glendale and Hillcrest, we've already trained those freshman teachers, and all freshmen will actually begin their learner portfolio, unless they already have one.
All freshmen in the academy.
Say it again?
All academy freshmen, not all.
These numbers are numbers of what?
Grade levels. Yes, I'll, I'll go across here in a minute, yep. And then the following year, 1920, good question, Dr. Taylor, we're going to start with these grade levels. And in 1920, it will be these students and these teachers at those grade levels that will train and begin their learner portfolios. So all second and third grade, all sixth grade and ninth, which you'll notice.
Because once you get them started, then they just.
Yes, because in the next year, those kids.
I didn't know what those numbers meant when, you don't see it without that. Because I'm like, I have no idea what that.
They actually go then to the next grade, and then in 2021, it's not the kids that are being trained, it's the teachers, because they already have it. So it's the fourth, seventh, and tenth grade, 12th grade teachers that are learning how to do it. So that, that, you're right, it probably doesn't make sense without a key.
Yeah, a little legend would be great.
Teachers and students, yes.
Well, I just listened to you. You made it clear.
Yeah, well, good. There you go. Glad to hear. So that's the rollout. By 21, 22, all students will have one, and all teachers should be trained on how to implement this in their classroom. And there you have it. Well, that's it.
I want to add something.
Please do.
You know, since you didn't invite me. One of the things that I found fascinating when we were putting this together is, I asked, like, so is this the norm now? And it isn't. We really are on the cutting edge of doing this. When we spoke to about 40, 45 people from around the country, they were fascinated by it, and it really, we're leaders in this. I don't mean we're the only ones, but it's not something everyone is doing yet, so it was a neat thing to present on.
Yeah.
Now, do you want to add anything to that?
Excellent, excellent work, Jill.
Oh, I didn't want to be commended, but I thought that was, because I asked, some of the stuff I asked you when we were preparing the presentation, is how, how many districts are using this, and we still are leaders in it.
Yeah. Well, and Jay might have mentioned this, but back when I came on board, was new to this, we went to the Ed Leader Conference and heard of this. There are some other districts, but very few, that are really kind of just starting in this space, working on four Cs, how to demonstrate that, how to show that kids are learning in that, so, yeah.
I think they're in the same place we are. They're starting off in pockets, but they haven't gotten to necessarily full district implementation, maybe just a handful are in the same book that we are moving towards district-wide implementation.
But we also met a lot of people who haven't started yet who were really excited about it, which was neat to see.
Yeah.
And what they mean by that is, they want us to figure it all out, and then go present, get all the bugs figured out. But I, but I just would say, I commend you for doing choice and participation and piloting here and there, because, because you learned so much about what works and what doesn't work, and feedback from teachers and students, and then as far as, and then rolling it out in increments. I commend you for that approach.
Thank you.
And I just will say that, coming from the world of higher ed, where we were helping students build online portfolios, you know, so that they can be prepared to present their work for a job, you know, I see the trickle-down effect that now in our digital age, I mean, I still put artwork on my fridge, because we can't afford one of those big fancy digital frids or whatever, but I'm just, I'm glad to see we're taking a proactive approach to helping our students not only prepare for college and the workforce in terms of having their materials to show, but that we're also helping students understand that their demonstration of learning outside of test scores is really important, too. Because we know there's rich learning experiences that aren't captured through those kind of standardized tests, and this is a great way of demonstrating that learning, so.
An example of that maybe, that you might be interested in on Monday at Westport, I think about 1:00, the fifth grade, fifth graders that are getting ready to promote to sixth grade, not graduate, but promote to sixth grade, part of their fifth grade requirement to move forward is they're sharing, for their parents, they have updated theirs, and sharing with their parents for, as part of their commencement celebration. And we haven't seen anything like that, and so I'm excited to be a part of that on Monday to see how our students are utilizing that differently with their parents as an authentic audience of, this is, here's my report card, yeah, but here's what I really learned during that time, to put some substance behind the grades, if you can put it that way, so very excited to.
Yeah.
Well, a couple of real kudos. First is, thank you for being explicit that test score, we are more than test scores. I mean, they are a necessary evil, but not sufficient condition for measuring learning. And secondly, this is really engaged learning, right? So that's the, all the good stuff. Now the question, in terms of communication, critical thinking, et cetera, how do we know that when we see it? Right? This is, the student is his or her own curator, right, of all the stuff there, but where do we get to the point where, oh, that's really good critical thinking, and that's meh, and that's really good communication, that's meh? So who's, who also gets involved in curating all of this?
I think that's the messy work that's going to be the next, once we hit this system wide, is then we go back and say, how effective is this? And how do we teach students, since they're the owners of this, how do they get in and think about their thinking and be good judges? And I, you know, I would hate to start putting rubrics around that, but in a sense, we have to help them think that way. And so I think that's going to be the next steps after we get it implemented.
And I was going to say, to use the word rubric, with Ken Kay's work, he actually does have some rubrics, if you will, or some ways to document or show that work, and Wilson Creek is actually using some of those, which is really more to help the teacher how to, even if you're going to, how do you teach creativity, right? Could be another question. How do you measure it when you see it, but how do you teach it? And so kind of helping them do that with their kids, so.
As long as the rubric is sort of empowering as opposed to kind of the iron cage.
Right, can be a grade, right, absolutely. It's good.
So my question is, so when our student, students finish one of these in there, ready to graduate, how far behind will higher ed be in looking at that and utilizing it as a part of admission to higher, because I know now they look at ACT, they don't look at MAP scores, as far as I know. Higher ed, they don't look at student MAP score in terms of admission or scholarship opportunities. So, how long?
To my knowledge, no.
Yeah, I don't think so. So, you know, so I guess that's, my question is, so when or how or would they then look at a student's portfolio to say, oh my goodness, you know, you have done so much, and look at the amazing learning you have accomplished, and, and so we want you to come here.
So this is where we get to Jill's part of the presentation tonight, you're working with Missouri State. And then we'll just move on down.
Well, we talked about that, and I don't know the answer to the question, but that's the obvious way I think things are moving. So it's important to be a part of it and be able to allow our students to communicate in multiple ways what their achievements and what their learning process has been. I agree with you.
And our partners in the higher ed to be open to looking at other ways, or other indicators of student success, performance than an ACT or an SAT and a class rank.
I think higher ed does not necessarily change quickly. I think, master understatement. But I, there are increasingly, I think, institutions that are going test optional, right, ACT, SAT. I'm not sure about the local institutions, but increasingly students, or institutions, I think, are looking for students who can do extraordinary things, and increasingly, in spite of ourselves occasionally, recognize that extraordinary cannot be captured in single metrics, right? And frankly, somebody, a senior who's going to do something extraordinary, like this young woman who's now a freshman, you know, three years from now is going to be doing extraordinary things. My guess is, she sends that to a director of admission, like, yeah, we're good.
And that would be great. That's what we're.
And I can say with confidence, I don't think anybody ever asked for a MAP score.
No.
No, never.
Not in higher ed. Somebody may ask, but even that person, I don't know that I'd want to get to know, really.
Nor does a job, nor does an employer.
There more questions? So remind me that, so students log into their learner portfolio with their, with an SPE, SPS account, or a personal account, or, my, my point is, is they can access it even after they've left our system?
Yes. It's, it's an SPS account as long as they're with us, but once they leave, we can transfer it to their personal account, it becomes theirs. And that's why we actually chose Google Sites, that was the one factor.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else? Well, thank you, gentlemen. You did a pretty good job without your sidekick.
Thank you.
And now, Missy, are you ready to come up?
I'm ready.
We're at 7:02, early childhood expansion. My friend, Missy Riley, is here. And by the way, I did not help Missy prepare this. I don't know what she's going to say.
Invite me better if you did.
Next time, invite me.
Okay. Okay, so, oops, what did I do?
Well, Shane, what did you do?
Or what did I do?
Sign you up. Sign in.
It's supposed to be security.
What did I do?
I think Shane did it.
Sign in. You're okay.
Bruce. Just fine. One second, it's ready.
All the way back to the.
Don't be, okay, all right. So, first of all, I'd love, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to be here and to talk with you, and give you a little bit of a quick update of what's happened in just the short amount of time, since, A, we figured out that we were going to be eligible for some funding, and then B, that we were going to have a new center to do some expansion in. So, you probably know that I'm thrilled, and I keep telling people, be careful what you ask for, because things are moving, and they're going fast. So, this is where we are. Please chime in at any time if you have any questions, and we'll make it pretty informal. But I kind of started with a who, what, when, where, why, and how, so our impact and why it's important to us, our state eligibility, and what we're looking at, how we're recruiting, and then our next steps, which include a timeline and logistics for the fall. So, impact, kind of why we're doing it, I think, I've probably stood before you enough times that I probably sound a little bit like a broken record, but just in case you forgot, 90% of the human's brain is fully developed by the age of five, so we are actually losing opportunities, those windows of opportunity that close in a human's brain by the age of five, seven, nine, if we're not optimizing the experiences that we're giving to our earliest learners. And so I noted some studies that are down there. If you want a little bit more, those are kind of the tried and true studies that, where you'll get that seven to one return on investment, all the way up to 17 to one return on investment. Perry preschool project, the Absidarian study, and the Minneapolis Federal Reserve Bank. So, another why of why we're doing this, my dear friend Dana Carroll addressed the board a few months ago and talked about some great opportunities, and what we figured out quite a few years ago, what started as a kindergarten aggression study turned into a kindergarten readiness study, 2005 to 2006. And in 2006, we determined that about 25% of our students that were coming to kindergarten were identified as both parent, by both parents and teachers as not ready for school. And then you can see the progression, 2010, we dropped to just 20% not ready. That was when we were kind of at our peak with parents as teachers, and at our peak with Wonder Years classrooms at the time. So what we've kind of found out is a bit of an overlay of when there's funding in place for early childhood programming, those readiness scores mirror that. Then 2014, we jumped to 28% not ready. That was after our 60% cut in parents as teachers, that was after our approximate 50% cut in Title I funding at the time. And then we're making our way back up in 2016, and you might notice that we went from a four-year study to, after Every Child Promise started, to, we're now doing a two-year study, just so we can watch those numbers a little more closely. So our goal by 2023 is to be down to just 10% of students not ready for school, using all of the same measurements. Missouri State University does all of those, that data collection and the metrics for us there. So, I think we're going to get there. All right, here's the legislation. I won't read it to you, but kind of highlighted the important parts there. So we're looking at students between the, pupils between the ages of three and five. So in order to enter kindergarten, you have to be five before August 1st. So we're looking at two groups of students, those who turn four by August 1st, and those who turn three by August 1st. And who are also eligible for free and reduced-priced lunch. So that's the expansion piece. We already have our Title I classrooms in place, which are academically at-risk children, so we use the dial, that dial, and then some information from the parents and the screeners and the parent educators on getting a multi-criteria for Title I, but then this, with the expansion, is all related to free and reduced lunch. Okay, and just, this is kind of back to the law, so applicable to all LEA and charter subsequent year after the foundation formula is fully funded. This school year, the foundation for, the foundation formula was officially fully funded. And then, so starting July 1st of 2018, all districts and charter schools can claim a limited amount of pre-K students for state aid. So, this is that limited number right here. It's 4% of our five to 18-year-olds that are already in our district. So, we are, have been operating under the assumption that that's going to be right around 600 students when we're fully implemented with the new funding. So thankfully, we are phasing that in a little bit. We're not doing all 600 additional students in the first year. We are planning to add 200 each of the next three years, for school year 19, 20, and 21. So our current count, and these are non-early childhood special ed classes, they're not included in this count, because there is some overlap, and then it gets a little messy trying to explain that, but our students who are in Title I classrooms right now, that's 425 students in 22 classrooms, and then you can see it goes up by 10 classrooms and 200 students each year.
And the way we're going to control for that is to have like caps on our enrollment? Just in case there were more who wanted to?
Caps on enrollment.
Like if there were more than.
Just like there are today, there's, we have more kids that would qualify for Title
than we can serve. We'll have more kids next year that will want to come than we can serve.
What will we say to them?
That we don't have enough funded seats. That's the same thing that we've had historically, right? Yeah. And then we'll add, we'll be adding two hundred the following year and two hundred the following year.
It's just a curious question because we don't say that to regular stu-, you know, we take however many come. So I was wondering how we were going to achieve that.
Right.
We're handling it differently is the answer.
Yeah, exactly.
The state limits us, right? The state pays every student K-12, but they cap us at this number.
Okay, I get it.
For early childhood. Good question. Yeah, it's a great question. Okay, so where they are and where we're going to be operating, we will have, we'll have both centers and then satellite sites, which we've, and then I'll talk a little bit about that. We'll talk about our curriculum a little bit, our instructional hours, and then student-to-teacher ratios. So program locations, we have the opportunity to have two centers next year. So we will have Shady Dell as it is. There are eight good-sized classrooms there, two very small classrooms that will be used as PAT hubs at Shady Dell. They're a little too small to have twenty students and two teachers in them. I think they were originally designed as special education classrooms when it was a K-five building, so probably more like six to eight students in there at a time. But that, those will be hubs. And then our administrative office for PAT is still planned to be at Shady Dell also. And then at Campbell, we plan ten classrooms there, also a PAT, a large PAT hub that has about half of our PAT staff housed there, too. Then our, what we're referring to is our satellites. These are our classrooms that are within our current elementary school buildings. And we're not adding any there this year, other than adding one classroom at Weaver that, to get us where we need to go because we have some teachers that needed to stay at Campbell. And then we also still...
Missy, can you go back a second for just a second? So that's one, two...
Nine.
And are these the wonder years?
Right.
Currently?
Currently wonder years, yep.
Okay, or talent month schools.
Yep. And then Head Start co-qualifying, we're continuing with that partnership and we'll be looking in the future for how we could fit those into centers. Right now, it's a pretty big task just figuring out the funding and the logistics of the funding. And so those are just kind of staying put for right now. And that's the plan for next year. That's been a really good partnership for us and it's mutually beneficial for both programs, so we're going to march ahead with those. So the recruitment and next steps, we have been operating from a parent interest form, which we've never done before. In the past, what we've done is every child that we screened that was age-eligible, we sorted by most academically at-risk and had a, an eligible file and an ineligible file just based upon what we've known. So this has kind of turned all of that upside down and we're now asking parents to come to us and fill out an interest form. We didn't know how that was going to go. We sent out about a thousand letters spring break week and we've already had about eight hundred families that have said yes, we're interested.
How many did you send out?
A thousand.
About eight hundred.
Eighty percent.
This is why I asked my question. I, we are going to end up capping.
Yeah, we're, we're going to cap, but of those eight hundred, there are some who aren't going to qualify and, and I just sent it to Dr. Jungman today.
A lot of those would be three-year-olds, too.
Yeah, and we've got three-year-olds in there right now, too. So we're going to have to prioritize.
Start with our three-year-olds first before we go in three-year-olds.
That has some really good parts and some not so good parts.
I know, it, it's, it's a first-class problem, is what I like to say, that we know people are out there, we know they're, they're looking for services. I, so we'll, we'll work with all those families and make sure that they end up somewhere.
How did you get, how'd you send information to a thousand people? How did you know, how'd you know?
It took a lot of work.
I mean, I'm just thinking.
No, we, when we screened them, we have parent information on there, both addresses and email addresses.
So these have already been screened?
They've already been screened. That was a thousand that had already been screened that were age-eligible, that we sent that out, too. And then we continue to screen. We're still screening about probably thirty to forty children a day right now and so, and a lot of them...
How many don't, how many are never on our radar? What do you mean, like what's...
Typically, the number that I have used for the past couple of years is of the approximately eighteen, nineteen hundred children in a class, you know, for, in kindergarten, we'll have about eighteen, nineteen hundred children that will start kindergarten. So that's the number I operate off of. And we screen about eleven hundred of those, eighteen, nineteen hundred. And then of those, we pretty much do a fifty-eight percentile above and below, so about half of those have qualified for Title. We'll have a little bit more in here that will either qualify for Title or ADA because there's a lot of overlap in that group, but there are some that I think we were looking at about a ten percent overlap that only qualified for one of those and not, or, no, that only qualified for Title but not for ADA.
So my question is, how many, how many early childhood students are not even on our radar? Like that, that we don't, they don't even get a screening because their parent doesn't know?
Wouldn't that be about eight hundred?
About, about seven, yeah, about seven hundred for age group.
Okay. If, if it's about nineteen hundred and eleven hundred are screened, I was figuring that that's the group.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the title.
No, that's okay. And I just did our PAT final invoice and that eleven hundred was almost exactly, eleven to twelve hundred was almost exactly the number for four-year-olds and for three-year-olds that we screened last year.
That's not so bad, really.
Yeah, we're trying and we're trying to find them.
We didn't doubt you were trying.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to find them all. So, and, and then, you know, then the, the, the finessing piece of it is, you know, we, we definitely don't want to run good childcare providers out of business either. And so we want to be able to make sure that families are able to access the program that best fits for them, too. So there are, there are lots that are out there, but I have lots of friends in the private provider world that want them coming their way, too, so. So that's our interest form and it's, it's front and center on the SPS.org website. If you haven't seen it, you're welcome to check out there. That says two hundred, currently seven hundred and eighty-five age-eligible. That was, I think, as of Monday morning. We're now right about eight hundred. So we were getting about ten per day. It's slowed down a little bit. What we're getting now is people who have filled it out once and are coming back and filling it out again because they haven't heard anything yet, like, hey, we're still here, we're still interested in preschool. So there's a lot of cleanup work for my secretary, Heidi, that she's been, she owns this.
We should put a note.
Yeah.
Do not apply twice.
Yeah, yeah.
Entelee?
Yeah, we don't mind if people call, if, you know, if they say, we're not sure, we haven't heard anything, so, but we did try to get it out that we probably won't be doing placements until June or July also, so. Families get anxious and I don't blame them, so. And then the hiring piece, so we will be hiring or have been hiring teachers, paraprofessionals, counselor, nurse secretary, and an assistant director. A new assistant director that will also serve, we'll have an assistant director at each of those two centers. And then they'll also have some district-level responsibilities, too, because we do our own curriculum assessment instruction. And so they'll be helping me with that, too. And then the buildings and the classrooms, we have officially ordered complete classroom setups for our ten new classrooms. We are working on, I think I just finished my list today, of our PAT hubs. We are currently in five different hubs, moving to just the two centers for next year. And then we're also looking at plans for before and after-school care at Campbell that's similar to what we have at Shady Dell, too. And then, I can't remember if we have, if I have, or what else we doing, a transportation pilot at Campbell, too. So that'll roll out after we actually know who, which children and who's coming. So...
So when do you expect to know that?
June, July, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's going to be a light summer for you.
Yeah. And so our, it's been a collaborative effort. Parents as teachers has definitely been a vital part of this. All of our early childhood programs, we definitely have early childhood special ed in the, in the loop. I drag Kristi along with me every chance I get because she serves as my, the other half of my brain and my eyes and ears. Sometimes I'll say, did you hear this? Is this what we're supposed to do? Is this where we're moving? And she goes state-level meetings with me and then our local stuff that we're doing, too. So thankful for her. Head Start, we've been in the loop, kept keeping them in the loop, too. And then Dana from Every Child Promise is going to be sending families our way, too. So some of our collaborations. And then I'm to the questions part.
I asked one.
Okay.
Anybody have other questions?
Bruce?
Is the funding for the additional two hundred students coming from ADA and Title?
No, it's ADA.
All for ADA.
All from ADA. We'll, we'll be able to claim approximately six hundred kids on ADA after full roll-in.
Yeah.
So, so the growth is really about ADA growth, right? We're not really dedicating new Title resources through this process. We'll be dedicating all the new state formula dollars.
Because of the statute, right?
Right, because that's what frees up this growth opportunity is the, the formula dollars.
I just, Title was mentioned in there.
Well, I didn't want anybody to think that we were not doing Title anymore because of it.
We're using that as a screen.
It'll be a combination of services.
And supplementing.
Anything else? Thank you, Missy.
Thank you.
Looking good.
Yes.
Looking good. All right, so we are at Board Policy, Adoptions, Revisions, Second Read, and Dr. Jungman may have a few things to say.
No, we first read this last time.
Says that.
Yep.
All right, so that means we've all had opportunities to look at these. Board of Education Policy, EHBC, Data Governance and Security, and Revision of Board of Education Policy, JHD, Student Guidance and Counseling. Do I have a motion that the Board adopt all policies as presented?
She'll move.
Charles, and a second?
I'll second.
Denise, thank you, and everyone, please vote.
It's got to count to five tonight. It's just five.
It keeps looking for the other two.
That's right.
Somewhere on some beach.
So do we.
So do we.
Of course I am.
Did you get my song?
I did.
All right, cool.
Good one.
All right, thank you. Come along, sister.
Did you get it?
Uh-uh. Oh, no.
I'm waiting for it to pop up.
Oh, you still haven't gotten to vote? Careful or I'll sing again.
Yeah.
Yay. It come up for you?
It says, it says, it says, it's just not...
Oh, it is? It's just unanimously Charles and I.
There you go. Let's move on, it will catch up.
Yes, let's move on.
All right, so there are no new business items tonight, and so we will move to unfinished business, ten point oh one, Internal Audit Report, Student Activities, Ms. Embry.
Good evening again.
And we have, we have our friend from BKD here.
We do.
That was our latecomer. I was like, who's late to the party?
I'm pleased to introduce to you Mr. David Butler. He is with BKD and he is a Senior Managing Consultant with BKD. He is a Certified Public Accountant and also a Certified Information Systems Auditor. And you've been in the business for seven years or so?
That's great.
Something like that. So we welcome him to Springfield Public Schools this evening. He's been working behind the scenes, but this is his first encounter here publicly. So invite you to the podium.
Excellent, welcome.
Share information.
Perfect. Thank you for that kind introduction, Carol. So ladies and gentlemen on the board, thanks for having me to present the Activity Funds Report. I'll try to keep it short and sweet since I know you had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to go more in-depth about the report with my colleagues Angela and Adam. I first wanted to thank Carol and her team for assisting us in this effort. I know it's not easy having external parties come and pick and prod you when you're trying to do your, your actual day job, but I also, we also appreciate the fact that you realize that it's, to improve yourself, sometimes you have to engage external parties to have them kind of kick, kick the tires and see what, what can be improved. So without further ado, I'll, I'll jump into the audit. So generally when we do audits of this nature, we have essentially a grading scale, satisfactory being at the top, generally satisfactory being in the middle, and then like it sounds, unsatisfactory being at the bottom. And there's actually definitions within the report, but I won't go, go in too, too in-depth into those. Now, that being said, as we conducted the audit, we actually came, we had, we started by looking at the district's policies and procedures over activity funds, as well as the internal controls and segregation of duties around activity funds, and then the accounting treatment of activity funds, along with some other miscellaneous items. And after we did our, completed our field work and conducted our interviews and performed our analysis, we noted there were two observations slash recommendations, if you will. The first one revolved around our transaction testing. And what we did there was we sampled about twenty-five items and we noted of those twenty-five, there was a couple that lacked sort of purpose and authorization. And so going forward, management will better educate the staff as well, as well as incorporating guidance to their financial handbook. And so we think that's a great step forward. And then the second finding we had revolved around the policies and procedures, we noted there was a couple that hadn't been updated since two thousand fifteen. And also there was, there was kind of some ambiguity as far as the guidelines or the definitions. And so going forward, they're going, the management's going to actually implement a Student Activity Handbook, which I think is a great step forward as well, and kind of better define things within that handbook. And so after those two findings, you'll note that we also had some opportunities for improvement. And so it's important to note that those aren't actually findings or anything, it's just kind of, as we were going through the audit, we said, hey, here's some, here's some areas that hopefully may be improved that'll help refine your process. And so one of the ones we noted was that fight the finance staff should maybe create like a one-page reference guide for the principals since they deal with activity funds, but it's not a part of their everyday activities. And so if you have that one-page guide, they can maybe, if they have questions, they can reference that and maybe even add, add additional questions where they'll go to the finance staff and ask those questions and hopefully it'll eliminate issues on the backend. The other issue that we saw was a potential opportunity for improvement dealt with the, the training. And so we think it would be a good idea if the finance staff put together some kind of training, whether it be PowerPoint presentation or even videos, and put it like in a central repository that people could have access to, so that in case if they ever come, come across it in their, not, their non, or their unusual duties, then they can actually reference that and, and kind of, again, eliminate issues on the backend. And so like I said, with, with that being said, try to keep it short and sweet. That's really all I had. Did you all have any additional questions or concerns?
Anybody any questions? See, that's how good you are.
Try to be. Oh, and I actually did also want to give an update on the two outstanding audits we have. We are currently in the reporting process of the Disaster Recovery Audit. And so we're working with Carol to kind of fine-tune those things before we present that to you. So hopefully we'll have that sooner rather than later. And then we're also in the, we're in the, finishing up the field work stages of our physical security audit. I know Brian Gordon from IT team actually received some documentation late last week and was actually out in the field conducting onsite visits and interviews, I believe it was Friday and yesterday. And he'll be finishing that up probably Friday and I believe Monday, because I guess school gets out on Monday. Is that correct? Tuesday.
Tuesday, midday. I think my children would want you to know.
Okay. But yeah, so that's, that's where we are on those two audits as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we need a motion that the Board of Education accept the internal audit as presented.
So moved.
Alina, and do I have a second?
Second.
Charles, thank you, and we'll vote.
I don't know what's going on with it. It's showing unanimous, final resolution.
Well, all right.
You've got what you need.
I've got one.
Excellent, well, we'll show that unanimous.
Just announce it and then we'll live it forward.
And that the vote passed, we'll move to ten point oh two, the City of Springfield Agreement to Donate Interest in Real Property, Carol Embry.
Unless you have additional questions, the next three items are first read at the last meeting and Carol, I don't think needs to be at the podium unless you have additional thoughts or follow-ups.
Well, see, yeah, I had a thought that someone other than me could have an opportunity to say all these words. No, I'm going to do it.
Do you want her to read the motion?
Okay, so, so clearly some lawyer wrote this. Are you ready?
Are we doing these all separate, Jill?
Yeah, I have to do them separate.
You're tired.
No, no.
I'll read.
I just wanted to blame someone else.
Okay.
I'm good. So based on the information that Carol provided in the past meeting, do I have a motion that the Board authorize and approve the agreement to donate interest in real property for the Primrose Street Improvements, South Avenue to Kimbrough Avenue, project number two zero one three PW zero zero four two WT, and to perform all work, which is the responsibility of the school district under that agreement, the President of the Board, Jill Patterson, is hereby authorized and directed, who directs her to do stuff? To execute the agreement on behalf of the school district.
So moved.
Second.
Alina and Denise, thank you, and so we will all vote. Oh, I touched it and it went away. That's because it didn't like the part about directing me to do stuff. I mean, really, who does that? How did that go, Carol?
That was excellent. I could not have done it better.
You probably wouldn't have added the... Yes, did it work, Ms. Kathy?
Yes.
Cool. Alright, and now we're going to... Excellent. Good news, it passed. Now we're moving on to 10.03, which is the City of Springfield Cost Sharing Agreement that Carol has told us about in the past. And that has the following motion associated. Do I have a motion that the Board authorize and approve the cost sharing agreement for Primrose Street Improvements between South Avenue and Kimbrough Avenue, between the school district and the City of Springfield, Missouri? This includes payment of all costs of installation of the sewer line and conveyance of a sewer line easement for this sewer line. The President of the Board, Jill Patterson, is hereby authorized to execute the cost sharing agreement, as well as the documents required to convey the necessary sewer easement to the City of Springfield. Do I have a motion?
With great admiration for how well that was read, so.
Oh, thank you, friends. Charles, okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
You don't have to be quite so enthusiastic, Bruce, because it's a second, you know? Alright, and let's vote. We get them? We got them. We pass? Oh, good. Okay.
And if I may read this motion.
Oh, you want to read this one?
Yes, please.
Just to be kind to me, or because you really want to?
Oh, I'll take this one.
Well, he's gonna comment if you do it well or poorly.
I need some affirmation.
Okay, go ahead.
So the next one has to do with the real estate surplus at 529 West Division Street. And the motion is that the Board declares district-owned property at 529 West Division, Springfield, Missouri, to be surplus property, which is not required for operation of the school program, and available for sale, and authorizes administration to secure the real estate broker services of Sperry Van Ness Rankin with a commission rate of 5%. Sumed.
Second.
Alright, and I'll vote. Thank you. Okay. Now, we already went over this one too, right? Yes, or do you want to speak?
Yeah, so.
We're gonna move to 10.05, Community Task Force on S P S Facilities.
If you remember, we had a good discussion about this at the last meeting. You guys gave some feedback for Board officers to go back and make some minor adjustments. I think the essence of the document is still the same, but added some clarity, driving question, a little bit more on the timeline, some initial information. So this really, I think, provides the clarity of what the Board is looking for to approve that and allow the task force work to begin. So if this captures what you're shooting for, then I think Jill and Tim will be ready to do the work of putting the committee together. They've also already began the conversations with recruitment of co-chairs and can provide that information tonight also, so. Making progress if you are ready.
Do we need a progress?
I think this, yeah.
So I am asking for a motion that the Board approve the attached document guiding the deployment of the Community Task Force on S P S Facilities.
Sumed.
Alina, thank you, and a second.
Second.
Charles? And a vote. Yay. How did that go? Yes, did that pass? Oh, that's okay. Unanimous, okay. So that was the lead-in for me to share that we've been talking to some people that we thought would combine well to lead that charge. And so we have commitments from two of our outstanding community members. Bridget Dirks and David Hall have agreed to co-chair that group. So I think that we're off to a great start there. And let's see, it's Tim and Denise who are going to represent us on that, right? Correct? That, that's good, because when people aren't here, we gotta volunteer them for things. And since Tim's not here, volunteered he is. Alright.
And there'll be public meetings. You're always welcome to attend. And we'll get a schedule put together soon. That's kind of the next thing to work with, the co-chairs, to put the schedule together and then put the full invite list out, so.
Yeah, we're excited about that. Do you, are you up here to talk about 10.06 Budget Development, Salary and Benefits?
I am.
Wonderful. Fantastic.
This is a very brief presentation. Again, the full presentation will occur at the June 5 meeting, so just around the corner in a few weeks. So this evening, we are highlighting salary and benefits. And this, again, provides you context with regard to where those benefits and salaries occur currently and how they're distributed. So this marks our final presentation along this journey with that full presentation, June 5, seeking budget approval at our last board meeting, June 26. Again, five separate funds and two fiduciary funds that we manage. I mentioned that we're going to talk about the distribution of those salary benefits. We'll also talk about participation data for retirement and our collective bargaining general information, as well as the annual payroll cost comparison data. The operating fund is where the majority of our salary and benefits are paid. We do pay just a slight amount out of the Health Benefit Trust Fund, and that's for our wellness coordinator. So that stands to reason. And as is typical in public education and probably a number of other entities, salary benefits represents close to 80% of our operating expenditures each year. This does not include our substitute costs, because we do outsource those to Penn Mac. So 209.5 million is our current operating budget for salary and benefits. This shows you that distribution by fund. I mentioned the Health Benefit Trust piece. We do also have some salaries paid out of the GoCaps Fund that is a fiduciary account supported by other entities as well. And you can see that 71.33% is represented in the teacher fund, with 28.43% in general funds, which would include nutrition services and other types of staff in that as well. The salary data regarding certificated and non is broken between 63% and 37%, and this does not include temporary positions within the district. From a benefit perspective, we have 3,436 benefited employees in our district. And our benefits are provided to employees who generally work, or regularly work, rather, 20 hours per week. And then they qualify for benefits. So 1% of our population is not benefited. The employee salary and benefit data with regard to retirement is broken into these components. And you can see that we have what is referenced as PSRS, which is Public School Retirement System. And that covers our certificated staffs. 60% of our participants in retirement are PSRS members. The peers is the Public Education Employer Retirement System. And we have 39% in that. So dependent on your career path, you would go into one category or the other. So basically, anyone who holds a teaching certificate would be paid, paying into, and the Board would be matching, a public school retirement system. There's also another category that's called PSRSS. And that is for a very small population. And it was implemented in 2010, where there are some people who pay a smaller portion into PSRSS, and they also pay FICA or Social Security. And there's additional information about that on this slide. So July 1, 2010, is when certain positions were identified as being PSRSS eligible. And they pay 9.67% and also FICA Medicare. Whereas PSRS employees pay 14.5%. And then the employer matches that into retirement each month. And those people, for the most part, do pay Medicare, which is 1.45% of the full Social Security component. The, there are employees, though, who were hired prior to March 1, 19, April 1, rather, 1986, who do not pay any Medicare. And those people are very rare, because you have to have consistent employment with one employer. So if somebody went to work in another school district, they would then be subject to Medicare. It's a good thing for those people who do ultimately end up with Medicare benefits, but we do still have some employees who would not qualify for Medicare when they retire. And I know this is way more information than you think about. It's also what makes payroll in public education so complex, because there are so many scenarios under which an individual employee could fall with regard to withholdings. So again, Medicare only versus the full Social Security and Medicare. So with regard to collective bargaining, this is just some general information. We started those negotiations February 1, and they'll wrap up by June 1, per the collective bargaining agreements. The recommendations will be brought forward to you at the June 26 meeting and included within that presentation information. This slide helps you understand our five bargaining units within the district. And we have four that actually fall under the Springfield National Education Association. Those four separate units include one, teacher, librarian, and counselor, the second being school nurse. The third is called support personnel, and it includes maintenance, custodial, and distribution center staffs. And then the last one is the secretarial unit. Teamsters Local Union Number 245 includes bus drivers, bus aides, and bus nurse aides. And this shows you the breakdown of the employee participation in those units. You can see that the NEA teacher is 55%, which stands to reason due to the number of staffs we have in that category. Teamsters at four, clerical, five, SESP, which is that support employee group, is seven, nurses two, and the non-union is 27%. And that, that includes a variety of employees not listed previously. This shows you the percent of total of all the gross payments that are provided throughout the district. And again, not surprising that the teacher line would be the largest due to the number of employees in that category. We do have some part-time gross payments that are made as well. And these coding requirements are provided by the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So when you see the budget document that is presented for you at the upcoming meeting, you'll have a better understanding of why things are coded in that particular manner. That supplemental pay line, the 6130, that includes, for the most part, it's, it's made up of explore payments. So miscellaneous payments that are beyond a teacher contract would be within that category, as well as professional development payments, when certain hourly rates are paid for people who do curriculum development. That would be another piece of that as well. And then, of course, you see the classified salaries or non-certified or non-certificated. These are the people who don't hold a teaching certificate. They are typically non-exempt employees and qualify for overtime. And that would be that last line there, the 6180 grouping at 1.2 million. So this represents our revised budget amount for the current year. And we will be bringing you those finalized numbers after we wrap up, June 30, have all payrolls posted, and ultimately provide you with that annual report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that's due August 15. So if you have any questions about this information, I'd be happy to answer that. Again, we're highlighting some of this information to give you context as we move toward the budget delivery.
Excellent.
Context is helpful.
Questions, anyone? Alright, well, thank you for that. And we will move on to public comments to address non-agenda items, which is Section 11.01. And we will allow comments on topics not related to the printed agenda, limited to three minutes for each speaker, that I will keep track of. And just a reminder, it is inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. If there are materials that you want to share, please provide them to the Board Secretary, Ms. Luton, and she will distribute them to the board members. And I do have some people who wish to speak tonight, Joseph Fern and Piper Fern. Do, you know, do you want to come up together or alone? I let the other people do it together, so I want to let you too. Plus, you had to wait longer. Good evening.
Good evening. So my name's Piper Fern. My husband, Joe.
He's alluding you.
We have, we have a freshman son at Glendale High School. And he was 14 years old, and last September got involved in drugs. Started doing pills and marijuana. He's had one ER visit for an overdose. And we find that at Glendale, it's very, very prevalent and very easy to get these drugs. I see precautions for invasions of school and school shootings. And I feel that students are more likely to be sick and in the hospital or killed from a drug overdose. The third-floor bathroom is where they can get vapes, pills, marijuana. And I know there is drinking in the school. Kids come in high. My question is, why aren't there dogs? Why aren't there undercover cops? And why aren't they being drug tested? Because my children are in sports debate, and they sign a citizenship paper saying we will not do drugs. Our son is better, but it's a constant fight every week, every day. He's at school 34 hours a week. I did not want to send him back to school, but we really don't have a choice. And I'm here to, to ask for your help. It's more than him. And I just, I, it's been an eye-opener, and it's been gut-wrenching. And we're worried and sick and scared for him. And, and his friends that I've known since they were five. And I just, I don't know what, what's being done to help. And I'm just asking to let us know, and we'll do what we can to.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Fern. I am the father of three students attending Springfield Public Schools, ranging from junior to freshman to fifth grade. Thank you for letting me speak. The subject I rise to discuss is substance abuse by school-aged children and the role our schools play in the comprehensive response toward addressing this problem. First, let me say that neither I nor my wife hold S P S responsible for raising our children. Nearly any issue a school-aged young person faces has contributing factors that are separate from their schooling. However, school-aged kids do spend a sizable amount of time at their school, where they are influenced by and exposed to both positive and negative influences. I do not expect Springfield Public Schools to solve my family's issues with substance abuse. But I am hopeful that the Springfield Public Schools community sees the significance of the challenge of substance abuse and fervently embraces their part in helping to solve this challenge. The Substance Abuse Response Staff and Personnel at my school have been engaging. They have taken time to talk with us, provide resources, and have authentically sought to assist my family in managing our situation. They are doing their best with the tools at their disposal. They do, however, speak about things they cannot do and intervention's not available because of constraints placed on them by factors outside their control. This is unfortunate. We can all do better. My hope is that this issue is given the high priority and the Springfield Public School resources it warrants. In my opinion, and in the opinion of some Springfield Public staff, it is a crisis. My family is not looking for Springfield Public Schools to solve our difficulties. We, as a family, are seeking to manage our situation head-on. To augment our efforts, we are researching what steps Springfield Public Schools is taking to adequately and appropriately respond, and are eager to hear more information from our school, Springfield Public Schools, and this Board regarding this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here and for waiting, because you had to be patient.
Thank you.
We're going to move to Section 12.
Joe?
I'm sorry. Yes, did you fill out a piece of paper that tells us that you're here to speak?
Probably.
Okay.
They're out front.
Can I fill it out real quick, or is there?
They're right out front. I don't think I have, I don't have one here.
We took the last two out there.
Kathy, will you pull them out? And fall to some board updates, and then we can finish with that? Yep.
Okay.
Cabinet updates.
We're gonna do some cabinet updates.
And then we can come back and finish that.
Yep.
Carol?
I shared that you're busy working on landing the 2018-2019 budget. And at the same time, that does include the work and operations team and analyzing those capital requests that are part of that budget as well. So lots of work going on by lots of teams in there gearing up, getting ready to jump into those schools and do the work while the kids are absent as well, staffs as well.
Great.
Just a few quick updates. One, AAA department with our analytics and assessment just needed 118,000 testing sessions. So includes the MAP test, the E O C, AP, all of the above. So, and they're not done. They still have a few more this week, the last week. So I just wanted to thank you. Some smooth feedback we got from stakeholders was thank you very much. We have site liaisons in every building. You kind of help coordinate that, so we'll give it a shot. Also want to let you know that our kindergarten enrollment, we have been tracking it really closely. We've also been doing a campaign in Communications Office. And right now, we have about 1,235 kindergartners enrolled for next year, which is up about 200 from this time last year. They'll probably all kind of look out and watch that we are tracking in the right direction for kindergarten enrollment. Also want to let me know that Explore enrollment is booming. As a total, a year ago this time, we had about 10,900 students. Right now, we have 11,213 students enrolled in Explore. That's a great, great metric for us to watch. It's a great opportunity for kids over the summer. We see the most grow in our online enrollment from our high school students and all other students, elementary, above, with a significant increase from about 3,300 at this time last year to about 5,900. And that's not including our launch partners. That's just our S P S kids. So, and then I always watch our pre-kindergarten kids, the same kids who have enrolled and where we are with them. We're tracking almost exactly where we were at. We're tracking almost exactly where we were at last year with a little about 800 students at this time. And my goal would be to get to 1,000 pre-kindergarten students prior to. Want to thank that team who does such a fantastic job. Also just want to thank you. Hope you can come to graduation tomorrow at the college at the Galloway's and hope you can join us for that. It's really special. Thank you for your service last week. It was really a great opportunity for our community to celebrate our graduates. Also wanted to give a shout-out to Reliable Chevrolet and Youngblood Kids tomorrow for giving away cars. It's amazing. Got to be there yesterday for Reliable Chevrolet Project Grab. Kids have to stay all night. You get their name in the bucket and they get to come over there. And young man Garrett Knight from Central High School won a new car yesterday. So how good is that? So I want to thank Reliable. And then tomorrow, we're giving away another car for those students who are eligible with 95% plus attendance. So if you want to see a kid win a car, it's pretty special. And then lastly, we're working, as we close down the school year, we're also working for Explore, but we're also planning teacher summer academies. So we're getting ready to do some professional learning there. We invite our neighbors into that in the region. And then also gearing up for our first day back, which we're calling Hackenworth SPS. There'll be a full-day conference on the night of August. So we hope you really enjoy some of those events, too.
Excellent. Thank you.
Stephen?
Well, this is my first year-end commencement season during my time with SPS. I've just been amazed at just the amazing pace that everyone is going right now just depending on the year.
I bet.
You know, in such a great way. And there are so many amazing stories to share. And right now, SPS, we're featuring this kid from Central that won the car. They're in attendance, a car that we're bringing up this week. And New Leader Color 10, K-White, recovered those. One of our typical high school seniors, Emma Swinson, is a semifinalist Presidential Scholar Program. And we have a feature up about her. And we also featured the two Central High School students with a perfect ACT that she brought to me, Dylan, Zeeven, and then Moleo will be featuring her as well. There's New Leader photo galleries from commencement. And New Leader was there and we've got some great engagement of our students with their families and others. And it's an exciting time. Five commencement's in over two evenings at JQH. It was awesome. And then we have a great teacher on Holland Elementary and Apple Learning Space, made possible by their PTA, community volunteers, and then Principal Gary Too. They all worked together to build that space. And with the sunshine we've had recently, there's lots of opportunities for the students to engage and learn there. Recently, we celebrated National School Nurse Day and Teacher Appreciation Week. We had a lot of engagement on social media. Shout-outs to specific teachers and nurses that have made a difference in the lives of students. And so that's been exciting. And then finally, our Ready, Set, Supply will work in the board, her team, to communicate the great work that our community partners are doing to supply students in our Title I schools on the first day of school with the supplies that they need to succeed in learning. So we'll be looking for a feature coming up in the New Leader to be able to word out about that as well as some other opportunities. So lots of great stories in this commencement season as the year winds down. It's an honor to be able to help tell them.
Any updates?
Okay, hiring, hiring, hiring. We continue to hire. We are wrapping up our Explore hiring at this point. We have hired over 200 online courses, 1,400 online courses, as well as 1,200 classroom placements. This time last year, we were about 11,50 on the hiring for the classrooms. I can't recall. It was around 100 or so. We had a little more on the online courses. And so we're at or above where we were last year. Last week, we brought in about 80 of those hires for a mass onboarding session. It was our first go-around with mass onboarding, and it was very successful. We're really excited to get that team up and running right through the start of summer school. So huge success there and thanks to the HR team and to our Kelsey Bravo and Dave Comfort and the team for the hard work they put in to get hires completed for summer school, our Explore program. Our FY '19 hiring, we stand at 153 filled positions. We have about 60 posted, so we are well on our way to meeting our goal of 80 hiring, 85% by June 30. We're still pressing hard toward that goal, believe that we can make that goal. We're certainly going to do everything that we can to make sure that we accomplish that by June 30. And special thanks to our leaders for prioritizing hiring and continuing, you know, this busy, busy time of year to continue interviewing. And hiring is kind of difficult to keep that going with all the other activities and interviews. So thank you to them for continuing with those efforts.
Two questions. One, I've been asked this question. Are we still hiring for Session 1 and Session 2 Explore teachers?
We do have, continue to have some openings. I think they continue to hire. I'm going to look at Dr. Hackenworth. But I think we do have a few positions still open. I know in second session, our first session might be filled or we're closed if we're not filled there. But there are still a few openings, I think.
Yeah, we're closed and we don't really close enrollment. So as enrollments continue to roll in, we'll increase the number of sections and we'll hire more.
Okay, so it's not closed. Okay. And then we, if I understand correctly, we take the, our own SPS teachers, current teachers get first dibs at those spots.
Yes, they do.
And then, so do we have any, or let me ask a different question. Do you know kind of what percentage, both of you, what percentage is being filled by our SPS?
We had like 1,100 SPS employees, 1,100 or so.
I don't recall.
I can't either, but it.
Like over 75%?
Oh, 90, 90%, 90-plus percent are SPS employees. Very confident.
And are we providing launch online courses for partner districts for summer school as well?
Yes.
Okay. It's not just fall and spring, but also during the summer?
Correct. We have about 1,100 enrollments of our with the next kind of partners.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go back and get our public comment.
Yeah, we're going to go back to Joshua Gekki now. And Mr. Gekki, you have three minutes for a non-agenda item.
That's just fine. Welcome. Thank you so much for squeezing me in, and I'm very sorry for the disruption. I just didn't know about the piece of paper. So I just wanted to say, I'm so thrilled at so many things that SPS is doing, particularly the emphasis on really collecting data and measuring what's happening in our schools and the success of our students. And I really love the portfolio. It's just such a great way to showcase those performance and authentic assessments and get a better picture of what learning is really looking like in our schools. I think those things are wonderful. And I just, I would say, Mrs., I just really appreciate all the work that's going into providing early childhood care. And that is such a good and needed thing in our communities, particularly for our communities that have great needs. If you recognize me from the April 10 meeting, I spoke on behalf of Springfield for Neighborhood Schools. And of course, I also want to express some concern about just the cost of closing school. And I understand that we don't like to talk about closing school or repurposing. But I think it's just important that we recognize that for the students that are attending that school, that's what's happening to their school. It's closing. And they're being sent to another place. And when we talk about evidence, I understand that there's evidence that supports early childhood care, and that's great, and we need to make decisions based on evidence. I think that's a really good way to approach things. Every peer-reviewed study I can find in any academic journal that talks about the effects of closing a school and moving kids from one school to another school, particularly for low socioeconomic students, which is the majority of the students at the schools that SPS is considering closing and the majority of the students that those students would be going into. So, you know, at Williams and Tom Watkins and the other schools that those students would be moved to, very high numbers of low socioeconomic status. And I just think that it's very important, as we consider the future of what happens to those students, that we count the cost of this kind of rob Peter to pay Paul approach of opening early childhood centers. We love the, we love the Wonder Years program. Our neighbor across the street goes to that at Bowerman. We love that it's in our neighborhood school. I'd love to see more of that. I'd love to see that expand into as many classrooms as we can fit on every school. But those are just my main concerns. I do have a few questions. I don't expect you to answer them now. First, I just want to know if the data systems that we have spent so much time investing in are capable of tracking the academic performance of the students that are moving from Campbell to McGregor? And assuming that we have that capability, I wanted to know if the district will track the impact on those students and then also track the impact on the students at McGregor after this decision has been made. I'm also curious just to know how do people who are interested in participating in the Facilities Task Force, like, apply and become part of that group? I think maybe we just email Kathy Luton, but I'm not sure if that's the right procedure. And I think those are my, those are my main concerns and main questions. And I just wanted to say thank you for making room for me and taking the time to listen. I really applaud your efforts with this Facilities Task Force. Thank you for listening to the community.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay.
I'll finish. No additional cabinet reports, and I can go straight to legislative.
Yeah, that would be good. Thank you.
You're well aware, you've been getting several updates from MSBA this week regarding, we are in last-week's session. Everything's rolling smooth. Budget's still very good. We've landed that where it needs to be. All the other bills that we're mainly concerned with are not moving for right now. The one that has popped up is Senate Bill 949. And to be honest, it was, kind of came out of nowhere because of the process that's kind of playing out at the Capitol is that it was a Senate bill passed out of the Senate. And typically, an education bill at that point would go to a House Education Committee to be heard. Or a similar bill would have been heard in the House Education Committee and come up that way. This bill has not had a hearing, and it was referred instead of to the House Education Committees to Rules Committee, which is the last check mark before going to the floor. So yesterday, I was able to go up and provide testimony in opposition. It's a massive overhaul of reading programming and very prescriptive approach to reading at the K-2 level. Got some really good elements that we already do and that we like. Some additional mandates with major cost expenditures, as well as bringing the state in to run basically a new assessment system of those kids. Has a lot of similarities, to be honest, to NCLB and how it was built out in third through eighth grades to take to K-2 level. The overall intentions are pure and good. It's about student reading. We're concerned with, number one, it's fast-track and it's not being processed the way any other education bill has been processed throughout the session and the impact without a lot of stakeholder input. They would also derail some of the work of the dyslexia task force that was put together by legislation in '16 to move forward with recommendations that are to be implemented next year, which we are prepared to do. However, this would not necessarily align to the same recommendations. So this would be in conflict with some of those regarding the assessment system, the local choice of that, how the districts are to administer. So that being the case, I would just tell you, I know you've gotten several alerts. This is the time to engage. The bill did pass out of committee last night, late, about 10 o'clock, and by a vote of, I believe, eight to five. But that's out of rules. Now it's placed on the House informal calendar, which means it can be taken up on the floor at any time. If it passes out of the House, it will have to go back to the Senate now because it was modified in rules with amendments. So there are opportunities to engage potentially with senators, too, if it would happen to pass out of the House the next, we're down to 36 hours. My understanding is no action on it today at this point, but it could be brought up at any time. So we support reading, and that's what I told them in our testimony. And we work hard, and we have teachers that are trained. And we are doing lots of things in order to prepare to deploy the recommendations of the task force. This would be a step backward and really a state intrusion. We believe it's the most prescriptive academic bill that I've seen in my time telling us exactly how you have to do that work. So it flies in the face of local control and your governance of this district, so.
John, do we know who wrote this prescriptive part of this bill? I mean, where did they get that input?
It's a bill that's been tipped, like most bills, right, that's been passed in other states. So this is law in a few other states, or at least some of the same elements. I don't know if it's exactly word for word. But the sponsor that spoke to it last night from the Senate was referencing Mississippi's data and their successes. And I was able to provide testimony that actually showed that our NAEP scores are higher at both fourth and eighth grade than Mississippi's. And we actually grew far, grew more between fourth and eighth grade. So this success story of 92% proficiency, which is what Mississippi claims, is actually a little, they have grown, right? And we didn't, but they haven't grown at the rate we have grown. And we perform higher than they do. And it doesn't seem like this would be the thing we want to chase. Florida's done some of these things, and they've done well with it. But the main thing that we're trying to convey, it's not one-size-fits-all. We have to allow local districts to have the flexibility to meet the needs of their learners on their terms and not a state mandate of how that is delivered, so.
Thanks for staying on topic.
Yep. We'll be back on it tomorrow. Could be a really big day.
I don't think we would necessarily want to include Mississippi among our aspirants when it comes to education.
If they're doing great things, we want to learn from best practices.
And. The bar is set low.
Well, and that's the data point that the senator spoke to a couple times, was their 92% proficiency rate. And actually, if that's their state.
That's their state assessment.
And. And it's all about thresholds, right? So that they had this great growth from 40% to 92%. Well, we know if you shift your assessment or you change your cut score, you can easily make that happen. So you've got to go to NAEP to actually reference a standardized process across states. And we're 10% higher in our proficiency levels than we are in those locations, at both the fourth and eighth grade level, and grow more than they do. So that data didn't necessarily hold water when it comes to that as a solution. So that's the big thing, to give you that update. That's the big thing that has bubbled up and has traction in some ways. We're trying to slow that down and say that we don't have a problem having conversations over the summer regarding reading interventions and programmings. If we need to update the state policy on this issue, then let's do that. But let's do it in a more thoughtful, robust process with the stakeholders at the table instead of skipping the House Education Committees and running it through Rules and straight to the floor.
Yeah. Will you go back tonight?
We'll be ready to engage tomorrow, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully, the last trip this year, we get out Friday, so we'll see. Hopefully, it goes well tomorrow. That's it. I'm going to leave.
Okay, we're at 13. Does anyone have any comments that they wish to make that they weren't able to make throughout the meeting?
I'll just say one very quickly.
Okay.
Which is just a shout-out to the team, the entire team that puts on the graduation ceremonies, that yet again, I'm impressed by the organization and the way it rolls out and whoever's in charge of that, anybody in the room, I don't know. Okay, I mean, it was, it's a machine. It runs very smoothly. I also would say that I was able to attend Kickapoo. And I've heard from other graduation ceremonies as well that our students are impressive in their way of honoring the celebration. And so I'm just always impressed with them. And yeah, it's one of the, it's the best part. It's, you know, we don't get paid anything, and it's the most rewarding part is being there to celebrate with them.
I'm sure that's, we all echo that. It was fun.
Yeah.
Great, great two days, and one more tomorrow. So come out to the Galloway's tomorrow. It's always a fun event also, if you get a chance.
So that was the next thing I was supposed to say, was to remind you all of the middle college graduation tomorrow. Also, we have MSBA Leadership Summit, June 1 through 3 at Tantara. And the Missouri Safe Schools and Colleges Conference will follow that meeting on June 4th and 5th. And our June Study Session is scheduled for June 5. That's a little hard to believe that we're preparing for a June Study Session, but we are. If any of you have plus deltas that you wish to provide, then feel free to write those down. And we will be going into executive session tonight. So do I hear a motion that the board meet an executive session to discuss real estate personnel, collective bargaining, student discipline, and safety matters as provided in Section 610.021, subcategories 2, 3, 6, 9, 13, 14, and 18 of the revised statutes of Missouri? Thank you, Alina. Do I have a second?
Second.
Charles, thank you. Would everyone please vote? And thank you all for being with us tonight.